Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order, and we are virtual again this evening due to COVID restrictions. So invocation is going to be given to us this evening by City Manager Erin Adams, followed by the flag salute by yours truly. So if you, everyone would stand, please, for the invocation, except for you, Erin, because you've got to stay next to the microphone.
All right. Would you please bow your heads with me? Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day, the blessings of being a resident and working in the city of Temecula. I pray over the city staff, the first responders that are doing the government's work and the frontline work. I pray for wisdom and discernment for the city council, the business of this evening, the business of tomorrow. Lord, we know your hand has been on Temecula and continues to be on and a blessed city on so many fronts. I pray for the residents and the businesses that are hurting in this global pandemic. I pray for our country. I pray for our county, our state, and our city, of course. Lord, that you just continue to heal, and we ask your blessings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Erin. So I'm going to turn and face the flag, and if you will put your right hands over your heart to repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and you may be seated. And Madam City Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards. Mayor Protem Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigard?
I'm here.
Councilmember Ron? Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
We do not have any public comments on non-adjourned items or the consent calendar.
All right, then we can move on to city council reports. And if you have anything to report, gentlemen, if you'll raise your hand, I will acknowledge you, and you can unmute and advance. No one, really? I think the Zoom meetings have made everybody shocked. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of July 28, 2020. Number three, approved list of demands. Number four, adopt resolution reaffirming and proclaiming the existence of a local emergency related to the COVID-19 virus pandemic. All right, so I will accept a motion and a second.
With approval. Second.
All right, motion and second. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Edwards?
Aye.
Councilmember Nigard?
Mute.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron?
Aye.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Aye.
Unmute is going to be the new phrase of the year, you know, going to be added to the dictionary this year, I think. So I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting, the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District, the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, and the Temecula Housing Authority and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. So on to community services.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Protem Edwards. I will now call the Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, since we remain in a virtual setting, would you please take the roll call?
Yes, Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigard?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
And President Schwenk?
I'm here. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Okay. I'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules, and we will go ahead and move on to our consent calendar now. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And we have one item on the consent calendar tonight, and it is item number six, approve action minutes of July 28, 2020.
That would be item number five, but yes, and I would move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Director Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigard?
Aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
President Schwenk?
Aye. All right, thank you very much. All right. Passes. We will move on to our director's report. Director Hawkins, anything this evening?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. General Matters, report.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Any directors' reports? All right, seeing then, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting to August 25.
All right, so seeing that we have no meeting of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency and no meeting of the Temecula Housing Authority, we will move on to the Temecula Public Financing Authority, and we will call that meeting to order. And could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair Edwards?
Here.
Director Nigard?
Here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwenk?
I'm here.
And do we have any TPFA comments?
We do not.
That would be TPFA, no public comments. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar and repeat. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Now we're on to item number six, that approved action minutes of July 28, 2020.
With approval.
Motion and?
Second.
Second. Okay. Could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Vice Chair Edwards?
Aye.
Director Nigard?
Aye, aye.
Director Ron?
Aye.
Director Schwenk?
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have a TPFA executive director's report?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Directors, anything? No, I don't see any hands waving. So we will adjourn each Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting and reconvene Temecula City Council meeting and on to city business. Item number seven, receive update regarding race and equity initiative efforts, adopt related resolution, and provide general direction regarding the same. So if we could have the staff report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem, members of the city council. This item is a follow-up to the previous action the city council took, follow-up to the framework the city council approved with respect to race and equity initiative efforts. Tonight, you will hear from Randy on the background and the history to date, remind our viewers of the framework that was approved by the city council in July, and receive updates on the various elements of this framework. We have also provided a draft resolution that is one of the many elements we committed to returning to the council for direction and action. Lastly, we will be providing the findings of our research on local government commissions that are charged with items of equity, diversity, human services, and race. We will be presenting the findings after polling 10 California cities and five cities outside of California. We are very interested in hearing from the city council on your thoughts surrounding the mechanics of this and the comments about the research that we've provided. We are hopeful this information will provide the city council with provoking questions, ideas, and shared vision and discussion. In addition, this will ultimately assist staff as we work to bring back the captured unified direction. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Randy for the balance of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Protem Edwards and city council members. It is once again a pleasure to bring you the update on the Race and Equity Initiative tonight. We'll take a minute tonight to set the stage, meaning telling the story of how we got to this moment tonight. After that, we will spend the bulk of our time receiving general direction from you on how you would like to proceed with the draft resolution before you, as well as the potential creation of a commission based on our research and any other direction you would like to give us tonight. It is important to reiterate that what is before you tonight is not a recommendation in stone, but rather a starting point for discussion in the absence of a subcommittee and in light of the comments we've heard collectively over the last several weeks from the city council and communities. With that, we'll begin. Next slide, please. So over the last several years, the deaths of George Floyd and many others have led to nationwide protests. We've seen civil unrest at the national and state levels. And locally, we've seen a series of protests as well. In response to these national, state, and local occurrences, social justice organizations, governments at various levels, corporations, and individuals have found themselves in greater dialogue with each other in their personal and professional environments on the topics of race, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Locally here, members of the community have shared their personal stories, their discriminatory experiences, their powerful voices in our community meetings in an effort to both be heard and be seen. The city council also shared their voices, abiding by the Brown Act constraints, individually with staff, and then publicly at council meetings, with each member expressing a strong desire to address the needs of the community in this space and to effectuate meaningful and sustainable change. This had led to the city council's action at the July 14 meeting. So at the July 14 meeting, the city council conceptually approved a variety of items. The items were presented in three different phases with multiple sections. The items were presented with the backdrop of the National League of Cities' REAL Race Equity and Leadership Program. Phase one focused on normalizing the conversation, and it was inward-focused. Phase two was focused on operationalizing the action, and it was external-focused. And phase three was focused on organizing a sustainable effort to go ahead and move forward in the spaces of equity, diversity, and inclusion in a meaningful, long-lasting way, and that was both internally and externally focused. The specific sections were related to education, communication, this resolution that is before you tonight, and the creation of a possible commission, as well as long-term policy review. And that brings us to tonight's status update and requests for direction. I'll go through the remainder of the slides continuously, and then similar to the July 14 meeting, we'll come back to specific slides to get direction afterwards. In the education section, the executive team and the city's workforce strategic group, working through our human resources director, have met together and separately a few times over the last few weeks to identify specific items of need from not only the executive team and council members' perspectives, as illustrated at the July 14 meeting, but also from the employees' perspective for the scope of services that will be requested by the National League of Cities, NLC. We anticipate finalizing that scope over the next two weeks and submitting it to NLC. We anticipate receiving a response within two or so weeks from that time and having preliminary training begin within two months or so. With media relations training, we have obtained a list of media relations firms that have provided educational sessions for cities in the past through the League of California Cities at a variety of educational settings, whether it's the annual conferences or the mayors and council members. The next step is to go ahead and identify the scope of services and obtain a response on cost, availability, and timing for that training. With respect to communication, we are awaiting a meeting with the Riverside County Sheriff to develop an understanding of what the existing policies and procedures are for the Riverside Sheriff's Office in regards to the hiring and training of police officers, as well as community policing principles. And some may have noticed that while a meeting was initially scheduled, it had to be rescheduled. Our Captain Hall is facilitating that meeting. In addition, the Riverside Sheriff's Office has also reached out via social media to the full community, offering to meet with individuals and groups, including homeowners associations, to provide the same understanding and answers to these types of questions. That, of course, brings us to the proposed resolution. The proposed resolution represents a starting point, as mentioned earlier, for discussion deliberation and if warranted and when warranted, adoption. As you know, many other cities, counties, and governmental agencies have already adopted similar resolutions. Some are more narrowly tailored to the public health crisis resulting from racism, such as the resolution adopted by the County of Riverside, while others are focused on the structural and systemic racism resulting in inequities in the transportation and housing arena, such as the resolution adopted by the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. Still, others have provided more formal statements in lieu of resolutions addressing various actions and policies related to racism, such as the League of California City. The proposed resolution attempts to balance all of these actions and considerations with the sentiment that was also shared by the city council and the community members via public comment at the July 14 meeting. The whereas clauses of the resolution lay the foundation for how we got to a place of declaring the three principles proposed. Those principles are, first, that the council and the city supports fair and equitable treatment of all human beings in a just society, irrespective of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, or cultural background, and denouncing racism in all forms, systemic or otherwise. Second, that it stands in solidarity with the Temecula community, specifically communities of color and those negatively impacted physically, emotionally, mentally, and/or economically by racism resulting from inherent biases and prejudices. And thirdly, it recognizes the role it plays in fostering healthy and prosperous environment for all residents of Temecula and commits to the meaningful advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion in the community dialogue, services, programs, and policies. Now, it's interesting when I reference the equity, diversity, and inclusion. I recall a moment at the July 14 meeting where Councilmember Nigard had asked me for what my understanding and definition was of equity. So to create a common understanding, we want to go ahead and share a general definition of what we believe diversity, inclusion, and equity refers to in this space. For diversity, we are committing to the presence of variety, which is expressed in a myriad of forms, including race, ethnicity, gender, culture, age, disability, perspective, et cetera. When we are referring to inclusion, we are committing to create an environment and a condition where those differences are welcome, those different perspectives are heard, and everyone has a sense of belonging. When we are referring to equity, we are committing to work on policies that may directly or indirectly discriminate on a variety of factors, race, age, socioeconomics, and providing an opportunity for all persons to succeed based on what their needs are to achieve that success. If we need to, we can go ahead later on, and we have a slide that will reiterate those definitions as well. But for right now, we just wanted to create a common understanding of the working general definitions of diversity, inclusion, and equity. So next, that brings us to the commission. At the July 14 meeting, the city council also directed us to conduct research into the creation of a commission. So we reviewed the boards, committees, and commissions that are related to equity, diversity, inclusion, human relations, or some form of the same, as the city manager mentioned, for 10 different cities within the state of California and five cities outside of the state of California. The information being presented represents a summary of our findings. It's preliminary in nature, and we welcome direction on the same. We looked at various elements of these commissions. It's important to note that every single element and every single city is different, and its needs are different. So there is no one-size-fits-all, but commonality, it can be found amongst many of them. So with that, the elements that we looked at were the name of the group, the number of members, the terms of those members, the typical member makeup, meeting frequency, the department affiliation, stipends, the establishment and appointment process, and specifically, the role and purpose of the group is where we spent the majority of our time. So with respect to the commission name, as I mentioned, there's kind of endless possibilities, because different cities have different needs and slightly different roles and purposes for these commissions. Most of the commissions somewhere include in their name diversity, inclusion, race, equity, human relations, or some form of the same. So typical suggestions are diversity commission is something that's very readily referred to, or if you wanted to use all four, race, equity, diversity, and inclusion, you could refer to the commission as the Ready Commission, or some other acronym, or however you deem appropriate on that. With respect to the commission number, term, and makeup, we actually, our municipal code kind of identifies a lot of this for us. Specifically, the Temecula Municipal Code references that unless otherwise provided, our commissions are five members. The code also references that the terms of our commissions are three years. And when we first initially start a commission, that commission starts with staggered terms, whereas one member receives a three-year term, two members receive a two-year term, and two members receive a one-year term. And that could be done simply on alphabetical or numerical, whatever the council decides. Our Temecula Municipal Code also references that the commission members are appointed by a majority vote of the entire council. And with respect to other cities, we did want to mention this, that other cities appoint some slightly differently, and that's either by district, by council member. Sometimes it's made up of community members as well. I specifically think of like the city of Turlock. They have a broader commission with either nine or 11 members, and certain segments of the community, including the college in Turlock, those board members also sit on that. So there could be other stakeholders as well. At the last meeting, at the July 14 meeting, the city council did mention that their preference was to go ahead and stick to an at-large method and go ahead and approve at-large based on overall qualifications of candidates. With respect to meeting frequency and department affiliation and stipend, what we noticed was that typically the diversity commissions, I'm just going to refer to them generically for the time being as the diversity commissions, are housed in either the city manager, city clerk, and in some cases, if they have a human relations personnel-related aspect, sometimes in the human resources department. Typically, these commissions meet once monthly, and that is also consistent with our Community Services Commission and our Public Traffic Safety Commission. And then with respect to stipend, we actually, it would be the same as our other boards, committees, and commissions. With respect to the establishment and appointment process for a potential commission, our code and resolutions actually are already in place for this as well. The Temecula Municipal Code actually indicates that we can go ahead and the council can appoint such boards, committees, or commissions as it deems necessary by ordinance and/or resolution. And Resolution Number 1962, just last year, helps define our appointment process. So with respect to a potential timeline and the dictates of Resolution 1962, which actually says that we shall have a 60-day application recruitment period and that the public interviews and appointments shall be made at a council meeting, regular or special. What a potential timing could look like if we wanted to match it up with existing vacancies on other commissions could be if council, and again, this is potential only, council is welcome to discuss, deliberate, and give any other direction they wish to. This is for example purposes only. If council was to give direction tonight, staff could return at the August 25 meeting with a resolution establishing the commission. The whole month of September and October would be the 60-day application recruitment period, just as it is according to our other commissions and board and pursuant to our policy. And then in November, it would be reviewing the applications, conducting the public interviews at a regular or special meeting, and making those appointments. Again, this timeline is consistent for matching up purposes with one vacancy on the Planning Commission, two vacancies on the Public Traffic Safety Commission, one vacancy on the Community Services Commission, and two vacancies on the Old Town Local Review Board. All terms would begin January 1st. With respect to the commission's role, this was pretty consistent across all cities and is consistent with our existing commissions as well. The boards, committees, and commissions appointed by the formal legislative body, city council, are advisory in nature pursuant to the government code. Legislative authority remains with the city council. So again, similar to our Community Services Commission, Public Traffic Safety Commission, Planning Commission, with the exception of its statutory duties, it is advisory in nature. This commission could potentially consider items within its jurisdiction suggested by the city council and city managers and make recommendations to the city council. It would work with and through the assigned director, department director, and liaison, just like our other commissions do. It would collaborate on reports and recommendations to the city council, including its annual report requirement, just like the other commissions. So those are like the general rules that match up. With respect to its purpose, I want to spend a little bit of time on this. We have six bullet points here, and this is very consistent with what we have found in commissions in other cities. So one of the purposes of the commission is to build strong relationships around issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity with the city council, commission, staff, and community. The other purpose could be is to learn about existing city events, services, and programs, and identify opportunities for further diversity and inclusion within the same. As you know, we have a special needs program. We have a viticulture program. We have several programs that keep in mind diversity now. And so we could really go ahead and utilize this particular commission to not only learn about the existing opportunities, but then to go ahead and identify additional opportunities. This commission would serve as ambassadors to educate the community about these opportunities related to diversity and inclusion within city events, services, and programs. In addition, this particular commission would help identify opportunities for enhanced communication with all residents, including with various race, ethnic, gender, disability, and/or cultural backgrounds. Some of the examples that come to mind is this would be a great commission to recommend in its advisory form which multicultural events we could be celebrating, working in conjunction with our Community Services Commission. It could also be the commission that we rely on for redistricting purposes. It could also be the commission that we rely on to help identify proclamations and celebrations for various identified groups of, like I said, various race, ethnic, gender, disability, and/or cultural backgrounds. This particular group could also identify opportunities for improved outreach to all residents on various city efforts and initiatives. So the housing element comes to mind. Actually, if we could go back for just a second, you. So the housing element comes to mind, or when we do redistricting, this particular group could help us identify strong methods of outreach to all the segments of our community. And then, of course, last but certainly not least, this particular commission could help us evaluate the policies that are brought to it for consideration with an equity lens and make recommendations where it sees opportunities for improvement in the equity space. So with that, those are just some general purpose items. With respect to Phase Two and Phase Three, we will continue to monitor connectivity with Phase One on the items that are in Phase Two and Three. However, those updates we expect to begin after Phase One implementation. So with that, council members and Mayor Protem Edwards, again, all of this is an update and preliminary findings. We welcome any additional discussion, deliberation, and direction on any of these items, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Randy. Does anyone have any questions? I have, I have a couple, but any questions? No one, really? Matt, did you raise your hand?
Yep, I did. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks. A couple of quick questions. On the status of the individual, are we required to have an individual commission member be a resident of Temecula?
Yes, so you will recall that initially, we used to have all commission members be a resident of Temecula and a registered voter of the city of Temecula. A couple of years ago, we actually had to, maybe it was a year ago. We could no longer require that due to a law change on the registered-to-vote piece, but we still do. but we still do, we can still require residency.
Okay, and then following that, the, I know there's a number of organizations that have expressed a deep interest in being involved in this process. Are we, are we recognizing, or how functionally, how would you envision us recognizing organizational affiliation? Or, you know, obviously, we're appointing an individual, but often that individual comes with, you know, an organizational affiliation. So, you know, does that, is that part of their appointment, I guess, you know, are we recognizing, I guess, you know, that they're part of a certain organization?
Well, that would, we're, we're happy to receive council direction on that. I, I believe what you're referring to is that if, if a particular individual in their application packet identified that they were affiliated with a particular group, whether it would be, I'll, I'll just throw out some names, whether it's Maldef, Lulac, ACLU, whether it's Empowerment Center, NAACP, Temecula Unity, any, any group, that if they went ahead and referenced that in their application packet, that would we then assume group affiliation? Is that the question?
It's more of a, you know, how would we recognize whether or not they are, are representing their group when they speak as part of the commission, right? So it's not just necessarily bringing their own opinions in, but, you know, we get that sometimes with public speakers or other things too, right? Are you speaking on behalf of yourself? Are you speaking on behalf of the organization that you work for or represent, right? So I'd just be curious, like, functionally, how would we address that?
Yeah, and we're, we're open to ideas on whether or not you want that even to be a consideration.
I, I do have some thoughts on that, but we're in the question mode right now, so I'll save that for discussion.
We do not have a mechanism, Councilmember Ron, in place for that now. But if you would like us to consider that, we can certainly go research that and, and come up with a couple of different types of ways that perhaps you can take that into consideration, if at all.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how we could handle something like that.
I would just add to, you know, to that, that I, I think I could envision during the application process, you know, there's, there's obviously public interviews. If you're affiliated, it's part of your, your resume that you're sharing with the city council and the city staff. You guys, as the interviewing board, could simply, you know, ask those affiliation, membership questions if they didn't volunteer them directly during, during the interviews for the applicant.
The other important thing to know, Councilmember Ron, is that just like all of our other commissions, this commission is, will be obligated to abide by the Brown Act, and all of its meetings will be in the public forum. So if an individual member was speaking or not speaking or representing or not representing in the manner in which they were supposed to or indicated as such, every member of the public and other members of that group is free to provide commentary.
And then, and then my last question is with the, the membership itself. You said the default is five members on a commission, but with what, what's the process if we wanted more?
Actually, it's just the municipal code that says unless otherwise indicated, it's five members. So if you indicate whatever else, we'll make it happen.
Okay, so we don't need to modify the municipal code? We just do that here then?
No, the municipal code literally says five members unless otherwise provided.
Okay, that's, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else? No. Randy, I have a question. Back on phase one, where we named all the differences, you know, cultural diversity, you know, ethnicity and all that. I noticed that we didn't mention religion. Is that, is there a reason for that, or is it not a common thing, or?
And in, in the research that we found, it wasn't a common thing because the, the focus doesn't necessarily start there, but if you'll notice everywhere we reference, et cetera. So it's, it's, we're referring to diversity broadly, and we're first, referring to inclusion broadly. And if that is something that council wishes to add, we're more than happy to add.
Okay, I, I would like to add that, just because, I mean, to me, it was kind of a glaring omission, but there are so many other things, you know, identifiers that could be in there also. But religion seems to be something that's really important to, well, everyone, almost everyone, so.
And, and I would absolutely defer to the city attorney on if any of these categories are prohibited for any reason and/or not suggested for any reason. And we can work with the city attorney unless Peter would like to share comments now on that.
Anything right now, Peter, or?
No, we'll, we'll go through the potential resolution, but I
Peter, you're in a bad place because you keep freezing. You must not have enough bandwidth at your office. Okay, we didn't quite get that, but I know what you're saying. You're saying that you'll research what's already in the in the resolution right now, and you can come back later with an opinion, right? Yes, okay, got it. See, we've been doing this for so long, now I can interpret what you're thinking. All right, and no other questions? Okay, did we have any public comments on this issue?
Yes, we did, Mayor Patem Edwards. We actually have six public comments, and I'll read them now. The first comment is from Christine, Brian and Christine O'Neil. It says, please present our message at the city council meeting of August 11th, 2020. We disagree with the text of the resolution and would like to see it rewritten. Present tone of current text has an implied apologetic phrasing. We are proud citizens of our city and know as 30-year homeowners that Temecula is a place of freedom, dignity, and opportunity for all hardworking people who respect themselves, each other, and the unequal quality of life that we enjoy as citizens of this beautiful city. Temecula is a shining example of excellence, opportunity, and liberty for all. The next comment is by Rick Reese. I am requesting that the city's forthcoming resolution, as so described in item number seven, be reconsidered for modification. The resolute statements themselves are quite laudable, but as is so frequently the case, the devil is in the details. I seriously question some of, some of choices the city has chosen to highlight as justifications for this resolution. While the deaths of all the named individuals have a real sense of tragedy to them, a few of these cases were in fact attributable to the deceased young men's own criminal actions. For example, the Ferguson police officer who shot and killed Michael Brown was cleared by both the local authorities and by the Obama-era U.S. Department of Justice as a self-defense action taken by the officer. Brown brazenly attacked the officer attempting to take away his service firearm, therefore refuting the political claim that the criminal attacker, Brown, was merely following the dubious hands-up, don't shoot narrative. The tragic death of Trayvon Martin in Florida did not even involve city authorities or law enforcement officers whatsoever as the young man lost his life in a violent struggle with a Hispanic man who was acting as a part of a neighborhood watch program. The neighborhood watch man killed Martin after receiving a severe beating by his attacker, in which he was fearful for his life. Subsequent investigations and trials ruled that the shooting death of Martin was justifiable self-defense. I will add that the named deaths in item number seven resolution are apparently all black men. But if this resolution were to truly represent diversity, then shouldn't other people with different backgrounds and races who also meet, met with untimely deaths at the hands of police be mentioned too? One prime example is the murder of Justine Damond, an Australian woman with dual American citizenship who was shot and killed by a Minneapolis police officer in 2017. She was not a criminal in any sense. She called 911 in an effort to report a possible crime in progress, and she suffered grievously for it. The convicted former officer, himself a black Somali immigrant, is now serving a state prison term. Yet there is nobody protesting rioting or looting under the banner of Australian Lives Matter, nor should there be any rioting or looting. There are, of course, many other cases like Justine Damond's that I could easily cite for you and which do not meet the narrative of the highly-publicized agitprop pressure groups receiving all of the attention right now. This clearly illustrates, illustrates the lack of diversity within the context of your proposed city resolution. I believe that your resolution wording should be expanded to include the concept of creed as well. For many millennia, people have been persecuted and discriminated against because of their religious beliefs. Yet there is nothing that really suggests an inclusiveness of religion in the proposed resolution unless perhaps the rather watered-down term "cultural background" is supposed to serve as a lackadaisical catch-all wording. I think the word "religion" should be added to item number seven, just as the word is also used in our First Amendment to the Constitution. The other issue I would like to bring to your attention is the overall tone of the supporting points that are cited to justify the city's resolution. This tone comes off as both defensive and appeasing, as if the city of Temecula has something to be ashamed of. Yet Temecula was founded in 1989, some 25 years after the end of the Jim Crow era that was practiced in the American South. Temecula has nothing to be shameful about. We are a vibrant, diverse, healthy, and inclusive community, and these supporting rationalizations suggest that Temecula residents have something to be ashamed of. Nothing could be further from the truth. This does not mean that we are free of problems. Of course, we too have our share. We all live in an imperfect world. Rude drivers, homelessness, petty crime, neighbors with barking dogs, pushy shoppers, and other people acting like jerks is a part of the normal daily routines in life in this world. Yet you would be hard-pressed to find the source of such antagonisms here in Temecula to be rooted in hatred and bigotry. The iconic symbol of American justice is the blindfolded lady justice wielding, wielding a sword while holding balancing scales. This is the conceptual source of our equality and fairness. As human beings, we are all to be treated equally and with fairness and impartiality before the bar of American justice, and so too in our interactions with the civil, with civil and government institutions. The blindfolded lady justice does not meet out punishment, justice services, contracts, or other public order based on race, religion, ethnicity, sex, economic status, disability, or any other benign human traits. She is immune to these immaterial, mortal characteristics when objective truth is to be determined. Lastly, I add an honorable mention to the stellar law enforcement service that acts to protect and serve Temecula, i.e. the Riverside County Sheriff's Office. We are also blessed to have the U.S. Border Patrol actively engaged in our community, acting as a bonus police agency that we all benefit from. Our highly-professional local sheriffs, deputies, and law enforcement are a reflection of our high-caliber community, as so many of these first responders choose to make Temecula their homes too. It should be of no surprise to anyone that the dysfunctions we currently see as Americans in law enforcement all seem to occur in those cities and areas that have been poorly governed by Democrat Party machines for decades after decade after decade. Fortunately, Temecula has no such epidemic, endemic, and highly politicized pathologies like these other troubled U.S. cities, yet we all must remain vigilant, and I hope and pray that we can keep it this way. Please consider amending and changing the proposed resolution, as I had mentioned before. The next speaker is Emily Carrion. My name is Emily Carrion, and I am a resident of Temecula. I commend the city council for considering the resolution denouncing racism. I urge city council members to act upon this resolution by implementing a robust plan for addressing systemic racism in our city. I look forward to hearing staff's update on the Race and Equity Initiative, but based on the report considered at the July 14th city council meeting, I worry that it will focus narrowly on individual-level solutions that are incapable of solving systemic problems. The proposed plan, which emphasizes educating city staff and organizing conversations with community members, does nothing to improve the health and safety of Black, Brown, and poor Temecula residents. The resolution city council members will consider this evening also reflects ignorance of the difference between individual-level racism and systemic racism. While the resolution denounces racism in all its forms, systemic or otherwise, it elaborates only on the negative impacts of inherent biases and prejudice, meaning racism built into individual people's beliefs and actions. While interpersonal racism is indeed a serious problem, systemic racism is the reason why Black Americans are 2.7 times more likely to get COVID than white Americans and 3.57 times more likely to die from COVID than white Americans. Systemic racism, not individual-level racism, is the reason why white families have 10 times as much wealth as Black families in the U.S. Systemic racism is the reason why Black men are 3.5 times more likely than whites to be killed by police. The most impactful system-wide change city council members can take is to reduce Temecula's police budget. Temecula spent $38.5 million contracting with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department at this fiscal year. Research consistently shows that Black people are subject to overpolicing, police harassment, and police violence. When Temecula spends 44% of our budget on police, city council members send a clear signal to Black Temecula residents that their health and safety is not a priority. The city of Temecula must reduce its policing budget and reallocate funds to services that would benefit Black Temecula residents, including mental health services, housing, and education. This moment calls for a radical rethinking of systems that disproportionately hurt Black people. As written, the proposed plan subverts this and continues to prioritize white and business interests over the well-being of residents of color. I demand our city council members engage in meaningful system-wide action to address systemic racism in our city and our city's budget priorities. The next speaker is George Romback. I am in favor of a resolution supporting fair and equal treatment of all human beings and denouncing racism of all forms as well as one that declares a commitment to the advancement of equity, diversity, and inclusion that is set forth in a balanced and fair basis. As presented, the entirety of this resolution is not that. The first two whereas paragraphs glorify several persons who violated the rule of law that have died in the custody of or conduct by the police. They imply that the city of Temecula has some responsibility for that. They do not. While it is true that all of these deaths are a tragedy and in some cases may have been caused by the misconduct of police, it's not our police, and not all of the police conduct was wrongful. Those two paragraphs appear to be pandering to the agenda of Black Lives Matter. I object. All lives matter, including the unborn. There is no focus on the lives of any other races other than Black. The third whereas, the third whereas paragraph seems to set forth that the rioting and burn, burning of our cities is protest and related community dialogues. That is not accurate. I fully support our First Amendment right to peacefully protest, but that is not what has been happening, and I do not think that this council should make a statement that is not accurate. The fifth whereas paragraph implies that Temecula has had discriminatory practices that have been the cause of racism. While none of us in any way, while none of us is in any way perfect, and we should all try to improve our conduct, this does not accurately set forth the facts at issue. The resolution seems designed to set the stage to, for a call to defund the police. I am totally and completely opposed thereto. These are not the only problems with the proposed resolution, and before it is adopted, it needs substantial rework. The next speaker is Catherine Vilegrin. And I have been a resident of Temecula since 2003. I am submitting this comment regarding the city council's consideration of a resolution denouncing racism. I strongly support this declaration. More than this, I hope it is reflective of a deep commitment to reckon honestly with the many ways that racial discrimination is built into and upheld by our laws and our society at large, not solely in the minds and actions of any particular individual. We live in a country where the net worth of the average white family is almost 10 times greater than an average Black family, where Black men are handed down significantly longer sentences than white men when convicted of similar offenses, where Black mothers are 243% more likely to die from pregnancy or childbirth-related causes than white mothers, and where Black men are more likely to die at the hands of police than white men. These disparities cannot be accounted for by personal racial bias. They are the result of systemic racism. It is the responsibility of every individual and every community to name these inequalities as the intolerable evils that they are and to take whatever steps are in the power towards the creation of a fair and more just society. It is my sincere hope that the Temecula City Council will approve the formal denunciation of the evils of racism as a first small but necessary step towards fulfillment of this responsibility. Once this declaration has been made, I look forward to learning more of how the members of the council plan to work towards redressing the harm that systemic racism continues to cause. Madam Mayor Patem, I do know that I, I also have a comment from Ira Robinson, and for some reason, it doesn't appear to be in my stack here, but if you will beg my indulgence for just a moment, I will absolutely bring it up.
I think it's important that we hear it.
Absolutely. It was the last comment, and it's in my email box. And so I have access to it right here, and it specifically says
Ira would be here if he could.
He could, yes.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, in connection with item number seven on the agenda for tonight's meeting of the Temecula City Council, the following comments are submitted for reading into the public record, Mayor Potem Edwards and members of the city council. I have reviewed the proposed resolution and found it to be less than adequate for the reasons set forth below. As the very first action to be taken by the council since its July fourteenth approval of a Race and Equity Initiative, any implementing resolution which is adopted will necessarily be seen as a foundational resolution and interpreted as such. With that in mind, it appears that the proposed resolution's reference to quote "the Temecula community, communities of color, and those negatively impacted by negatively impacted physically, emotionally, mentally, and/or economically by racism resulting from inherent biases and prejudice" unquote, fails to make clear reference to other impacts, including but not limited to educational, medical, and housing impacts. In the absence of such language, it is possible, even likely, that we will end up debating whether the terms physically and economically include those kinds of things. Hopefully, that conflict can be avoided. It is respectfully requested that the council modify the proposed resolution to specifically address these concerns. In connection with the suggested inclusion of a reference to educational impacts, it is recognized that the primary actor in the education arena is the TVUSD School Board. However, any determination of policies to be followed in the city as a whole rests squarely within the purview of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide these thoughts.
Peter, can I can I ask you a question about that inquiry, which is similar to what I said about including needing to include every word or every possible reason that someone could be discriminated against? I think that's what Ira was talking about, and I mentioned religion specifically, but then he mentioned some others. So is there a danger that if we don't specifically say every single reason that then we cannot we wouldn't consider anything that was left out?
I I think you would still be able to consider those things. I think the question is, do you want to have a resolution that explains all of that, so there's no to what you'll be looking at?
Okay.
I don't see it as a legal issue, but a policy issue. Where do you want to have your focus? And, you know, how do you want to explain what the what you're going to be looking at?
Okay, then then we will discuss that as part of our general discussion, I think.
Right.
And that's every all the public comments, right, Randy?
Yes.
Okay, then we can move on for discussion. And I see hands. Mike, was that a hand?
Yes.
Okay.
I think I'm unmuted.
You are.
Madam City Clerk, I'm gonna, excuse me, Madam Mayor Potem, I'm gonna presume we'll handle resolution issues and then talk separately about the commission?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I'll start off with a couple of things that I think are important. When we heard this, and I think it was back in July, July sixteenth, when we laid out the framework. Was it July sixteenth, Madam City Clerk?
July fourteenth, sir.
July fourteenth, yeah. I had said a couple of things. I I had said, number one, that if we're going to have effective dialogue, that it needed to be safe to do so. That means that everybody who is commenting, and I really appreciated the comments today, you see the comments today were diverse. People have to be able to speak without, I guess, instigating the eye or the other people of other people. We have to be able to have the discussion. This whole effort is about dialogue and discussion. So disagreeing is okay, and discussion is what we're pursuing. The second thing I want to reiterate, and these are all before I give my comments, is we can pass any resolution. We can include everything in this resolution. This resolution could be thirty pages if we wanted it to, but no resolution is going to change the heart of a man or a woman. Okay, the dialogue and the interaction between people is what we are pursuing here. So I claim that that place to talk freely, and and if I offend anybody in my talking, it is not purposeful. In the beginning, I too had a problem with the number of people that were being described here. George George Floyd, Brantella, Ahmaud Arbery, Stephen Clark, et cetera. And I I think it's it's important, at least from this council member, and I think perhaps you'll hear this from my colleagues. The city, it cannot take an activist position. And in looking at these names, we're not taking a position, again, I'm certainly going to talk for myself here, on whether or not what happened with these folks is right or wrong. We can certainly have that discussion. There's a mixture here. Quite honestly, I don't know the details of every one of these cases. But what I do know is that these cases have spurred on the discussion, and that is all that that portion of the resolution is identifying. So I wanted to start with that. In relation to, Ira brought something up, and I wanted to address that. And that was education and other socioeconomic things. I think we have to be careful that we don't try to swallow too much at one time, or we won't go anywhere with this. I think we're already taking a big pill as it is, but here we are, and I think we can do it. And I think a resolution such as this can be a living document. I don't think, not only not only with the resolution, but as we move forward with the with the with the forming of the commission and its purpose. I think later on, we can address those things, but I'd like to look at them after we make significant progress on what we're setting out to do right here. So as to the resolution, I think for me, I'd like to just make some changes. I think the changes are minor, and I'm hopeful that my council colleagues will go along with it, and and I think they're simple. Randy, I have to compliment you, City Clerk. You know, on such an important issue to the city and the community, you were on your game tonight in explaining what we're trying to accomplish here. And you started off with some definitions as it related to equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I asked the city manager to do a little research on on what what are the definitions of those? And what he just put up, I'm, is this what what you gave me, Aaron, so I don't have to read it again?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. If if the city council will indulge me, if we could just put in a line or a whereas that that define equity, diversity, and inclusion, I'm okay, based on what we talked about. And so that's all I have as a comment on the resolution.
But Mike, did you say you wanted you wanted those definitions included in the actual resolution?
Yeah, yes. Because the resolution is is titled "The Commitment to the Advancement of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion", I think it's important to all the speakers that just send in their their comments, but to everybody else to identify exactly what do we mean by those words. And and I think the definitions, Aaron, I asked Aaron to come up with, submitted for the council's approval. Address it quite nicely.
Okay. Is that all?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Hands, Zach. Oh, sorry, Matt. Zach beat you. Go ahead, Zach.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor Potem. So first of all, just thank you for all the hard work on this. I I know there's a lot of time and effort's been put into this, and Councilman Nigar. I certainly appreciate your your willingness to have the conversation. I think that is truly the the most important part of all of this, is we all feel safe and and able to have this conversation. I just want to make a few just general comments, and then I'll go on to the resolution. It's important for me to start off just by saying that I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful for our community and our state and and our country. We started this process of normalizing conversations, not only here at City Hall, but in our homes, our businesses, our places of worship, and and really our entire community. Everywhere I turn, we're having this conversation, and that is healthy and that's good. It's definitely been an enlightening time for everyone in our community, from friends and family alike. I want us to not point fingers. Some of the the comments that I've heard, there there's a bit of a guilt, and and there's a bit of, are we placing blame on folks? And I and I don't think we need to do that. We don't certainly don't need to place blame or guilt on our friends or our neighbors. Racism and all of its impacts were born long before any of us were born. But we can, however, we can acknowledge that we are not immune, and we can work together to end racism, whether it's institutional or otherwise. So that's something I want to commit to do. This resolution we're considering tonight is just a small piece of the greater fabric of our country. After all, we are one nation, so what we say in Temecula and how we act in Temecula matters not only to our community but to our country, and and I think that's important. You know, as presented, I'm in full support of the resolution. I think, you know, I think you, Randy, you did a fantastic job of of getting to a point where you know, obviously, people, there's some folks that are would like to see a little farther, and and some folks that think it's a little too far. I think, you know, some of the language that we've used is 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 right there where I feel like we can, this, those are things that we can that we can work on and move towards greater equity and diversity. At the end of the day, it's really important for us to push forward and to do the work to end up on the right side of history. So with that, I'm certainly in full support of this resolution as written.
Thank you, Zach. Matt?
Thank you. Just just a couple of quick things. You know, one, I I think the the wording as as written for the resolution is is very intentional and very careful. When you look at the whereas', the whereas' don't aren't taking a position on an issue, they're telling the history of how we got to where we are today, right? And and it, these these names that are cited over and over again are part of a national dialogue and why, you know, communities all over this country have have moved forward in this conversation. So, you know, I think this is part of the history, and we're memorializing that in this resolution, and I think that's important because without that sort of escalation of conversation, really over the last decade or so, I think, you know, that's where we are here today. So I think it's important to start with that history. I also think that the, like was expressed earlier, Marianne, I think, you know, absolutely, I think we can integrate the word religion as as appropriate throughout the document. I think that's important, especially in our community. I think that's an important recognition. And 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 Mike, you know, I know we had spoken earlier about this, and I I I agree wholeheartedly that the the idea of including into the whereas' is the definitions extraordinarily important in this context. But recognize that we're not going to have the perfect definition to meet everybody's expectation of the definition, right? And I think that's that's part of where I think this, you know, the we we come full circle in our conversation of saying this is a living document. And and we don't expect, you know, perfection because we are starting this dialogue. It's going to change, you know, our perspectives and and our community's dialogue and conversation, and internally here at City Hall as well. And so while while I think it's important that we we think about things like education and healthcare and all of that, I think the resolution adequately captures it, but really, that's going to be an important part of the commission's first, you know, sort of marching orders, right? Talking about, you know, as their advisory role, defining, you know, better, I mean, we can help provide some guidance initially, but you know, they themselves are going to get together at commission and decide what their goals and objectives or mission, their vision are, and bring that back to the council and say, this is where we think we need to be. And and we fully expect that that's what the commission would do. So, you know, so I'm I'm looking forward to that that conversation and and filling in some of the some of the the gaps that we have right now. So so with that, you know, I'm fully supportive of the the resolution as written, save the two caveats mentioned about definitions and religion.
Thank you, Matt. So Matt has raised another question for me. Because the city council will establish boundaries for the commission, just as we do our other commissions, how much flexibility does this commission actually have? I mean, is there, how do we describe it? Anybody?
Can we take the resolution first and then maybe do the conversation on the commission second?
Sure.
A tight ribbon around that.
Sure. Let me add, let's see, I've made a lot of notes here that you guys have mentioned. So as we understand it, then this resolution will be the foundation to establish a culture that is safe for open discussion, that is inclusive of everyone, regardless of all of the different traits, cultures, religions that we have. And then by establishing that and opening those dialogues and continuing that dialogue, it is hoped that we will establish open lines of communication beyond the commission into the community, so people will feel safe and they'll feel as if they're heard. They will be heard. By doing that, we hope that that will change the culture. We hope that that will make people feel that this is their city, that they'll feel included as a resident, that they'll feel valued, that their opinion counts, and that they have a say in what goes on in Temecula. That's how that's how I understand this resolution. So I think it's really important. And the notes that I made were, we were going to add religion as one of the different potential reasons for racism. And what was the other thing? There was something else.
We were going to add the three definitions as whereas' that Councilman Nigar.
Okay, and I think that's very good, too. You know, I had concerns about all of the individual names being mentioned as well because, you know, many of these were from, you know, across the country, but a wrongful death is a wrongful death. And I wasn't familiar with some of them, which is neither here nor there, but but when I spoke with Aaron and the city clerk, resolutions typically are offered as a chronology, and they're offered in an order of events to establish the reason we're here today, and that's what the first couple of paragraphs do. They establish the reason that we're here today. And it was driven by, you know, the deaths of special, or not special, but individuals over the course of years, actually. And then it was culminated with the grotesque death of George Floyd that really brought us here. I mean, that was like the last straw for everyone. And while we have had these incidents in the past, and demonstrations have taken place, it hasn't generated the interest or the desire to change in cities that we're seeing now. So I think the timing is is just right for this. So taking into consideration the changes that were requested, which is adding religion and then including the three definitions, I will accept a motion.
Madam Mayor Potem?
Mike.
I I'm going to make that motion, but can I just add a couple of extra comments? Nothing to change what's been talked about. But I I I forgot to mention this, and I think that that, you know, over the course of the last, I don't know, three months, we've been hearing a lot about this, and this is the notion of defunding the police. And I know we spent thirty-eight million dollars on on police, but I I want everybody to know, you cannot look at that in a vacuum. We know what we're purchasing, and we spend that much money for a reason. The first city council, all the way up to this city council, has made it clear public safety is the number one priority of the city. And from day one, Temecula and its safety record is not an accident. And so we are constantly in the top one hundred safest cities in the nation. I think at one point, we made it number two, number five.
We're nineteen right now.
We're nineteen right now, and the things that we purchase, in a sense, by contracting with the sheriff's office, are things like our homeless outreach team, the burglar reinforcement team, the SET team, the POP team. I I mean, I could start naming a bunch of things, but all of these things are by design. And because we're safe, we've created a lot of jobs. Because we created a lot of jobs, we created a a a billion-dollar economy here in town. And we've transitioned and continued to transition from a bedroom community to a community where people can work. Now, I want to finish my comment, and I'm sorry for being long.
That's right.
But I want to finish my comment with something very important. I understand that there's a lot of call for defunding the police because there is a notion, and not necessarily unfounded, that some people are fearful of the police, and that some people feel that they are prejudiced. and that some people feel that they are prejudiced and that they're singled out for their race. We've heard enough of that to where this councilman, and I think the rest of us can agree, that there is something there and it needs to be looked at. And nobody whatsoever, whatever color you are, needs to fear our police unless you're a criminal. And, and so part of our efforts are going to be looked at that. But, you know, we continue to hear this defund the police, but it's important to know we're, we're, we spend that much money because we decided to, not because we just lost control of our police budget. It's purposeful. So here's the motion for the resolution. The resolution, as my motion adopted is written with the, with the changes that we include the definitions, as Aaron pointed out, and that we include the term religion and/or creed. I think religion is more clear. We're appropriate throughout the document. That's my motion.
Okay, need a second.
Second that.
Okay, Zach. So could we have a roll call vote for the resolution, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Nigar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
Councilmember Schwank.
Aye.
So shall we go back now and, and speak about the protocols for establishing the commission?
Yes. And IT team, if we could go ahead and put up the slides again, starting with the page 10, the commission's name. I'm sorry, page 11, the commission name.
Well, I, I liked the ready.
That one's easy.
We'll just start there. Race, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. I think that describes it aptly.
Okay, great. Well.
I'm on board with that, too.
So, okay, let's, our slides are up. So again, that was just a suggestion and Councilmember Ron, what I'm hearing, and then I believe I heard another council member. And so first direction we would like is, what would you like for the name?
Well, we've heard two. People said ready. Ready's fine with me.
And me.
And Mike.
All right. The Ready Commission, it is. And Ready stands for Race, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. And then the next item, next slide, is direction on, can we, are you guys good with the three terms? I'm sorry, the three-year terms, just like our current commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So now it is a question of direction on five members or more?
Councilmember Ron, you were, you were going somewhere with that and I'm interested where you were going.
Yeah, I'd like to see us have at least, and I know, we don't want it to be unwieldy, but I think if we're talking about race diversity, you know, I, I don't know how we accomplish that with five. And, and so, you know, I'd like to see us have, consider at least nine on the, on the commission, potentially. And if anybody else has thoughts as to more or less, I'm happy to talk about that. But, you know, at least for, for a start, and, and I think, you know, again, what we were talking about earlier is we don't have to be, you know, this isn't set in stone here. So if we find that that's, you know, too unwieldy or, or it's not enough to get the kind of representation we, we're, we're looking for, then that's, that's fine as well. But I'd recommend that as a starting point.
Councilmember Ron, I was going to say seven, but how about if we, i- i- if we go with seven and revisit it in a year to see, or, or wherever, any timeframe, to see if maybe it needs to be increased? I don't see decreasing below seven. I agree with you there. What are your thoughts?
I was going to recommend we start lower and then, and, you know, take advantage of changing it later on, so seven's good.
Mayor Protem, eh?
Yes, Zach.
What, what, so I was, I sort of, you know, settled on seven just for, you know, I thought, I, I knew, like you, Councilmember Ron, I feel like we, we need more than five for sure. But what's the downside of, of just starting at nine?
Um, well, probably none. You always say you don't want your committees to be too large so that you can have, you know, active discussion and, and all of that. So, you know, we have to have a negative, or negative, we have to have an odd number, but.
Mayor Protem.
Yep.
Maybe I can at least give my opinion to Councilmember Schwank. These issues that are about to be undertaken by this board have the potential to take a very long time requiring a great deal of discussion. Nine members operating in that sort of forum and with everybody being able to speak, respond to speakers, speak again, have that cogent discussion that we're looking for, needs to make sure that, that it's effective, needs to make sure that a majority doesn't cut off debate inappropriately. Those are the things I'm thinking about. I have no objection to raising it to nine. I just want to see the virtue of doing it. That's all.
Now, we assume, or we hope, it's my hope that different groups who are considered stakeholders would be regular attendees at this commission. Because I think that all items that are going to be discussed by this commission are, you know, they have, they're long reaching. They're going to impact so many things in the community as a whole. They're going to, they're going to actually touch every other commission and, and everything that we do. So I would hope that the groups would be there and certainly I encourage them to come and participate actively, comment, you know, file their public comments and speak with commissioners before and after the meetings. And so I don't know, what's the, what's the consensus? I heard seven was the most common.
Mike, can I get your indulgence on one quest then? If, if we're at a place during, and, and maybe Randy or, or Peter or Aaron can chime in on this, but if we're at a place where, you know, we're reviewing those applications at council meeting, you know, and discussing the makeup of those, those seven and it, and it's clear that, you know, we need, we need more, right? Because there are qualified, I, I, you know, I can see the folks who've already shown interest and expressed their desires and, and have really, you know, been, been, you know, talking with the city throughout this process. I could see, you know, a lot of them already, you know, offering up their, their support and service. And so, you know, I could see filling those seats very quickly. But, you know, if we're in a place, you know, logistically, are we able to at that commission meeting say, well, we'd like to do nine instead of seven? Is that, do we have that kind of ability?
So Peter, quick question for you on this. Our municipal code says five-member commissions unless otherwise provided. Could the establishing resolution of this, of the Ready Commission under membership say five to nine members as council deems necessary?
It would need to have a resolution. The resolution at some point in time would have to say a fixed number of members who would be on that commission. Now, as Councilmember Ron said, if you get to the point where you're selecting people and you need, you have a desire to have more members, you can adopt or amend the resolution to provide for those additional members. The only thing you'd have to do is set it up so that the agenda says you might also amend the resolution to add more people. But the resolution that establishes the commission and the resolution that you might change later on does have to have the number of members.
Fair enough. So if we could just.
I think you can easily change it as you're moving along in the process. You just have to be aware that the agenda is going to have to give people notice that you, you are likely, or you could have the authority to change the number of members of the commission.
Yeah, if we could just reserve that flexibility at that first meeting, that would be, that'd be great.
So I might drag it out a couple of weeks, but that's all.
Well, Councilmember Ron, let's, let's discuss this for a second because I, I don't see a scenario where if we take the, the flexible position now, that we don't use it then. I mean, imagine there we are with 20 applicants. How do we say at that point, and how do we say it? Ah, we're going to go with seven instead of nine because we don't think that the remainder are qualified. It just, it just can't happen. It won't happen. You know, so, so in essence, by making that flexibility decision today, you know, we're going to default to nine.
So you, you want to judge the applications based on the number of slots that you need to fill?
Yeah, in essence. I, I mean, I don't know how you do it any other way. Again, you know, we get 20 applications. And, and we decide that, you know, seven's not enough. We want nine, 11. Or rather, we want to stay at seven. 13 are, are going to be disenfranchised and it's going to be easy to say, well, why didn't two more people qualify? I don't know how we answer that. Say, well, you didn't qualify because of X. But even more important, I want us to go back to our last council meeting. This council, in, in very rigorous discussion, spent almost an hour and a half on Old Town parking and whether or not, and, and that was just on an Old Town parking issues. We were there till two in the morning that night. Does anybody really think this issue and this commission and the things that they're going to tackle is going to be in short order? I, I mean, they're taking on things that, and discussions that could take hours. And just very much by their nature, nine people, it's just unwieldy, at, at least for now. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I've got, I've got a recommendation for seven and a recommendation for nine. So we want to have a motion? You want to, you want to figure it out? I mean, we've made a provision, if we have seven, we've made a provision that we can come back and increase that to nine, but knowing that we have to establish a permanent number at some point.
Dr. Ron.
And I'm okay. Let's, let's just, you know, just so we have the certainty here, I'm fine setting it at seven. And, you know, as long as we know that if in the future, you know, then fine, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just, I knew that five wasn't enough and, you know, seven sounds fine, so.
We can revisit it in six months if you want. I, I mean, three, whatever, whatever we, we care to do, but anyway, that's good.
Fair enough.
Okay, so then are we ready for that motion?
So, so Mayor Protem Edwards, what I heard was the set number for bringing back on the resolution is seven. At some point in the future, if council decides it wants to move to nine, then we would go ahead and amend the resolution to reflect nine.
Okay. And I think we want to specify nine and not just, you know, a larger number, I think.
Specify seven, you mean?
Yes. Seven first and then specify that we can increase that to nine.
Correct.
Okay. And then the term is all worked out. You guys are good with the existing methodology of the three-year terms and the creation of new commissions, majority vote by council, so that's good. To confirm, at the last meeting, you indicated an interest to select all the members at large based on application content and that is what you wish to proceed with?
And I think we need to do that. It's my opinion, we need to do that in order to take advantage of the diversity that we have in the community.
Agreed.
I, I agree too. And last time we, we did that was the first time we implemented the new process. And it worked real well because we, we instituted a, a scoring system that each council member participated in. Is that how we foresee it moving forward?
You mean judging the applications, Mike?
Well, what, what ended up happening was everybody was interviewed and then each council member weighed in on who their top three were. And, you know, as, as, you know, I, I said what my top three were and Matt did his and Zach did his. Obviously, some people came to the top and that's who we went with. Is that how we envision this happening?
Yes, Councilmember Nigar. All of this pursuant to the Brown Act has to be done publicly. And when you voiced all of your opinions for your preferences, they were done in full public purview. And, and so that would be the exact same process.
I think it works.
I, yeah, I did. And it was as painless as possible for the applicants and for the council.
Very fair.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can move to the next slide. And are you, for, okay, so are you good with housing this department in the city manager, city clerk's departments, meeting once monthly, similar to our community services and public traffic safety commissions? And then the same stipend as other board members, as other boards, committees and commissions?
I think monthly is okay. And if it's determined that they need extra meetings, there's a provision for that, correct?
Regular meetings would be once a month and then obviously if they wanted to have special meetings or there was a need, it would be the exact same as current commissions.
Okay. And then, and everything else is going to be the same as the other commission?
If I.
Mike.
May add my two cents. Meeting once monthly is fine and, but I can tell you, again, the issues that they're going to take on, if the dialogue's going to move forward, it's going to be a lot more, particularly in the beginning. So is the council insinuating that flexibility is going to be there? Again, to have those discussions, what are those thoughts? Am I, am I misreading the purpose here or, or?
Well, I'm, I'm reading that the commission itself can determine whether or not it needs to have, hold extra meetings and they have the authority to call for those extra meetings.
Yeah, and my, my assumption is that they'll be part of our regular boards and commissions reports at council, too. So, you know, so we'll know, you know, there and, and, you know, can have some feedback, you know, as well saying, well, maybe we need to do an extra meeting this month if, you know, if we think that's important to. Hearing your saying, so, yeah.
Fair enough. I'm good.
Yep.
Okay. So then we can move forward to the next slide, which is the establishment and appointment process. We can, this is pretty quick. Obviously, the Temecula code, municipal code, says that we need to do it via ordinance or resolution. We will follow the exact same process for this appointment process as we do for the other commissions so that there is consistency among the same. Is the council okay with that? I am.
Yep.
Yes.
All right. So then the next slide. This is just a, a general potential timeline that we had provided to match up the consistency of the Ready Commission with the other commissions. Does this timeline generally look good for you guys?
I'm fine with it.
Looks good to me.
All right. The next slide. All right. So this, again, is the general role. This is all, of course, similar to existing commissions, the advisory in nature. The, they would have to consider items suggested by the city council, city manager, make recommendations. They would work through their department director and liaison, just like the current commissions do, and they would have an annual report. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I do want to, are we going to set some rules for this commission? And there's a couple of thoughts, why I bring that up. This commission can't be political. It cannot operate in the political realm. If there's a temptation by a member to operate in that political realm, they have to be nudged back into operating within what's best for the community. I don't know how, I, I, I guess there's some by rule, bylaws, standards of conduct, whatever you want to call it. Does anybody have any thoughts on that? And then Councilmember Ron, you also brought up affiliation. And maybe we should talk about that as well because I think that's important. Because it goes along with the political process. And I need to hear you guys' opinion. Are we, for instance, you mentioned, let's say, the NAACP. Well, they're an organization that clearly operates in the political realm. Their, their, I hate to say loyalties, but their interests may be split. A person could live in Temecula and operate on behalf or be part of the NAACP who, who has a definite agenda, but that may not be what's best for our community or focusing on the community. How do we reconcile those two things, the affiliation issue and the non-political issue?
You know, I was thinking of that same thing, but I thought in terms of our regular commissions now. And many of our commissioners, me included, Mike, you included too, when you were on a commission, Zach, we had other interests and I belonged to so many nonprofits when I served on the commission. But yet I didn't let my affiliation with those nonprofits, you know, change anything that I would have done on the commission. I know that, that. I know that that, I want to say legally, the recourse that we have is, I think what's been done in the past, if we have a commissioner that's stepping outside of their boundaries, the mayor meets with that commissioner and just has an open discussion, or the city manager might meet with that commissioner and and again, explain what the guidelines are. And so, what what do you call those? Is it guidelines? I mean, we all know the the things that we need to um recognize and obey as we operate on the council. Um, it's part of our, you know, ethics training, um, it's part of our conflict of interest. So I don't know, do we, we don't really define those things.
Maybe this is better. Let me put it another way. Maybe the commission only addresses things as directed by the council or the city manager's office. Maybe, maybe that that's the extent of it.
So they, so they, but but in doing that, Mike, do you think that if the community raises an issue um with one of their representatives on the commission, then that commissioner doesn't have the authority to come back to the commission and seek consensus to put that on the agenda?
Well, um,
I mean, that seems
That's part of this discussion. And 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 I say this is because this is not like any other board and commission.
Right.
It it's it's just not. It's about to enter into um a very volatile arena where emotions are very high and opinions are very high in every direction.
You know, I'm afraid if we would establish that uh boundary for the commission, that only council members or the city manager could determine what goes on the agenda, I think we're defeating the whole purpose, really, and that is to um have a commission that works, you know, at the behest of the council, but is there to root out any issues that um are inherent or, you know, systemic in the community. And I think if we, if we are the only ones that can decide what goes on their agenda, that to me just kind of defeats the purpose.
So can the, can a commissioner put on the agenda, they want to discuss defunding the police? Can a commissioner put on the agenda, um, they want to see more than uh or or a a more of an abundance of a certain race uh work at City Hall? Uh, I mean,
I think they'd have to have a consensus to do so, you know, like we do. We have a consensus before anything goes on the agenda.
Oh, no, we don't. No, 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 we don't.
Well, we kind of do.
No, we do not. Anybody in our can put, can put anything on the agenda at any time.
Boards and commissions don't operate the same way.
I know, so what's the parameter, is what I'm saying?
Well, you all served on a a board or commission. I I did not, but my understanding is the agenda is set by the department director that runs the board or commission.
Uh, negative, when I was on the planning commission, I was able to put things on the agenda.
Uh huh, commissioners bring items forward because they're the ones that are in the community, and they're they're the ones that hear what residents are saying and and what people, you know, want and think they need.
And so what I'm go go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to jump in. Obviously, coming from a commission, and you you're working through the department director, and then as the chair of the commission, commissioners are then working through you. Um, so you are bringing something with consensus. Oftentimes, someone would want to bring something that was sort of outside of the bounds of what that commission was supposed to talk about, and and we just wouldn't have that conversation. I I I feel like, you know, granted, this will be a different commission. But I think if we treat it much like we treat everything else, if there is some some someone acting outside of the bounds and we have that conversation, we certainly have those conversations now. And and we we trust in the director and we trust in our city manager to to bring forward items that the community wants to talk about in in a meaningful way, and I think we can do that. I don't think um, you know, sort of adding our our fingerprints to what that commission talks about is a good idea. Um, if they want to have a really tough conversation and and the commission wants to have that, and the director is approved approval approving of that, I think that's a great a great opportunity for the community to have that conversation. If someone comes and makes a public comment and brings something, brings an item, and that commission wants to visit that item, they should have the right to do that. Um, I I think we just trust in the process. Our boards and commissions are serving well now, and I and I believe this one would as well.
Which is not to say, gentlemen, that the the city council cannot um request that the commission hear a particular item, because, you know, we hear things too. We get emails and and letters and we talk to people, and so there have been many times that we have um tasked our commissions with taking uh taking up a particular subject or project.
Madam Mayor Protem, I I just want to weigh in and just remind everyone, as proposed, th- this commission is advisory. So, um, you know, getting outside the bounds of advisory, I I'm not sure you can you can do much if there isn't a, you know, a will to to move whatever the agenda item is, you know, into another commission, working through the department head, working through the city manager's office, elevating it to the city council. Um, you know, I I I envision um maybe a real-time example of this is um with Luke Watson, sort of the director that's responsible for the Old Town Local Review Board, which meets when needed, the monthly. They're dealing with the Old Town, you know, any of the development, the business of Old Town. But many times, things will go to that board, and they'll be hashed out or vetted or approved or kicked back or consensus built. And that same item also finds its way to the planning commission, which, again, Luke is supporting as a department head, the planning commission. And that item may not go any further than the planning commission, and sometimes it's required to to elevate to the city council. So I'm envisioning the addition of this new commission. Um, you know, working hand in hand with the department head, working closely with other commissions. And where needed, it's it's obviously, um, the city council is is the ultimate authority on policy. Um, they're just another, you know, advisory board.
Mister City Manager, if I may also add, then this is the um the general role section. You have six bullet points that you're going to be going through in just a minute. Um, typically, our current commissions, um, when something comes up, um, it is in the jurisdiction defined by that particular purpose of that particular. For example, the Old Town Local Review Board considers items that fall within its jurisdiction as defined in the Old Town Local Review Board. The Community Services um Commission considers items as defined in its resolution as its jurisdiction. So I think that kind of first line of defense is, does this fall under your primary? And then, does then with the other commissions of the city managers just outlined, and at the end of the day, as the city manager stated, it's advisory, you're the stopgap to anything.
And that's what prevents commissions from, you know, stepping into other commissions' territory also.
Well, let me ask a simple question. It's very simple. Um, notwithstanding the direction of the uh department director, can one of these commissioners put on their agenda, they want to discuss defunding the police? I'm not pointing that out. I'm just giving you the volatility of what we're dealing with in this time and era um as it relates to race relations. Okay, somebody may want to do that. Can they do that?
Can can we get to the next slide real quick, and that might help answer some of that?
Sure.
So, so I think this is kind of the the point here, right, is what is the purpose of the commission? And I think, you know, the the initial purpose that I see is what I was talking about earlier. I mean, we're we're going to have this opportunity for them to, you know, have their initial meetings, talk about their goals, objectives, mission, vision, but a lot of that is sort of defined here as to what the city's objectives are for this commission. Now, does, you know, defund of the police or any number of topics fit in un- under any one of these, you know, bullet points? Perhaps, right, but I think initially, you know, you see, you know, this this opportunity for um, uh, you know, and especially the bullet point here where we're talking about, uh, you know, identifying opportunities for enhanced communications. I see, you know, improvements, gaps, you know, needs, you know, that sort of thing that's being done. And so so initially, I think, you know, their role is going to be pretty well-defined by the council um as to what it is, you know, this commission is supposed to accomplish. Um, you know, you brought up politics and and everything else. I I mean, there's no, you know, there's there's no way to keep politics out of this or anything that we do as a council member. That's part of part of what we what we are. So we all bring to the table our perspectives, our backgrounds, our affiliations, you know, our beliefs um and understanding of subjects, so. That's the whole point of creating the commission the way we are. Um, you know, is to to have that community's, you know, dialogue through, you know, initially, these seven members. Um, and collectively, if those seven members identify something as a gap or an issue um or an event or a service or a program that they see as as critical to their, what they perceive as their role um as the uh as the commission, then, you know, um, then then I think we need to 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 listen. That's their advisory capacity. So, you know, having, you know, worrying about the what-ifs right now. Um, I'm just excited to see this move forward and and to start the dialogue, and the what-ifs, you know, those scenarios. There's a myriad of things that can happen that are both positive and and, you know, potentially challenging. Um, so it's, you know, it's something I'm looking forward to seeing in a dialogue with our community. Um, and rather than than, you know, handcuff it, you know, initially, I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see these members take this responsibility seriously. And Mike, you know, we've all been there, where we came to the city council on our first day, and we thought we had a perspective on the way the city ran, and we had an issue with, you know, whatever, what, you know, a uh, traffic issue or whatever it is, and we had this thing in our platform as a council member. And then, once you really see what's going on and you understand the constraints, you understand the liabilities and the risks. I mean, you know, once you really dig into the issues, it's not as simple as just saying, you know, well, I want to talk about this, right? There's there's everything else that gets layered on it. And that's where, you know, the city manager's office and the city clerk's office play an incredibly vital role in translating that to these commissioners. They're going to have their hands full, because this is new for our city. It's not something that's been around before. And they're going to set the tone and the the definition based on what they're hearing us say. And, uh, you know, and I I have full faith that, you know, the the two of them are, you know, uh, able to, you know, carry that perspective forward in this commission.
And the commissioners also kind of, the commissioners do hold each other accountable to some extent um by the tone of their discussions and and the directions that those discussions go, so. Um, you know, there are some, there are some safety valves there. But I think this is, this is a time when this commission is going to do what the city council really doesn't want to do and shouldn't do, because it needs to be done closer to the people um by people who um have experienced some of these issues that they're going to be discussing, so they have firsthand experience.
So
You know.
This uh, this horse I've been beating is about to pass out, so I'll let it, I'll let it go. And uh, I'm in okay with the three bullet points. Um, I just, I got my piece on the record of uh one of my concerns and uh just, you know, this is not the same as the Community Services Commission or the Planning Commission.
Oh, right.
We are charging them with something that is uh potentially very volatile, but I've I've said it, it's on everybody's radar screen, and we can move on.
So just really quickly, can we move one slide back, Chris? If you don't mind, thank you. Okay, so um we're we're good. Um, what we heard, the council's direction was, we're good with the general role, which is similar advisory nature, all that to the other commissions. And then next slide, this is the first three bullet points of their purpose. Again, building strong relationships um around issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity internally and externally, learning about our existing events, services, programs, and identifying opportunities for further diversity and inclusion in those things. Serving as ambassadors, um, I'm sorry, serving as ambassadors to educate the community about everything that is available related to diversity and inclusion with our events, services, and programs. And then the second three sets of bullet points here, thank you, Chris, I really appreciate you keeping up with me, um, is um is is identifying opportunities for enhanced communication with all residents. Um, this is where we talked about um those kinds of, um, you know, opportunities for multicultural events and working with the Community Services Commission and so on and so forth. Um, the next bullet point was identifying opportunities for improved outreach to all residents. This is where we really talked about, you know, how do we reach out for to get more input on the housing element or for redistricting purposes or any of those kinds of things. Um, and if they have any suggestions on that. And then the last bullet point is proactively to evaluate any policies that are brought to the commission for consideration, whether they're brought by the city council, whether they're brought by the city manager, um, to really look at those with an equity lens. And I think this is where some of the public comments that you're hearing, um, is there, as our definition of um equity states, you know, we commit to working on policies that may directly or indirectly discriminate on a variety of factors, and we want to make sure we're providing all Temeculans uh an opportunity to succeed based um in this community, based on what their needs are. Um, so this is kind of that last bullet point that is more um policy-oriented, um, to get to the the issues of the systemic piece.
Can you put it back up, please?
Chris, I'm sorry, can you please put this slide back up? There we go. And so those are the six bullet points that serve, again, as a summary for your consideration and direction only. They are not meant to be exhaustive. They are meant to be a starting point.
Okay, so knowing that, we're ready to move on.
So I'm hearing consensus on all of them?
I asked one thing, please.
Go ahead, Matt.
And um the uh redistricting, can we make that explicit in the bullet points?
Um, sure, so how about that um that second to the last um bullet point? And how about we per we include, identify opportunities for improved outreach to all residents on various city efforts and initiatives, including redistricting?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, and then um, next slide, um, well, that's that's it. Um, Chris, if we can go to the final recommendations uh slide. So at this point, oops, um, oh, the last slide that is that says recommendations, there we go, thank you. Um, so at this point, um, that includes the resolution discussion and approval. Um, we've had your direction and discussion on the commission. Is are there any other items that you would like to give us direction on, and then we can take one final vote on all of the general direction?
Well, gentlemen, was there anything that we discussed that you would like to add to or, you know, have clarification or anything?
Nothing more for me.
Okay.
Madam Protem, can I just add one final thing?
Sure.
And Randy, could you, if if Chris could go back one slide, just kind of in the, on the topic of, maybe two slides, thank you. Um, the topic of of purpose. Um, you know, these are going to be nine brand-new, uh, or seven, wherever we like. Seven, seven brand-new individuals to City of Temecula business. Um, and 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 like was mentioned, you know, once you get behind the curtain, there's kind of a steep learning curve, how things get done, what we do. So our vision as a staff, whether it's my department, whether it's Randy's department, whoever ends up supporting this this commission, this brand-new commission of new individuals, we envision the first several meetings um being this this really hopeful, helpful indoctrination by every single department in front of that commission to really explain the discipline, what we do, um, why we do what we do, what happens within the divisions of those departments. Because I think for this commission to be successful and launch into a lot of these purposes and and roles and 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 assignments and things, they really need to understand what every department and what every division uh budget and how it relates and capital and everything like that. So we, as a staff, plan on spending a lot of time in front of them so we can, um, they can really get a good understanding of the landscape, and then they can look through it through that a different lens for improvement as we go forward. So I just wanted to add that.
Mister City Manager, thank you very much for adding that. Um, it's been a while. Um, pre um my days certainly, since the city council um uh basically oriented a brand-new commission, and that is what we are doing. We are going to spend some time on orientation so that we can lay a strong foundation for this group of individuals through which to consider all of through which to consider all of these diversity, inclusion and equity issues. Um, and we will need to do that, um, not only just from a, from a commission HR orientation standpoint, but just from a functional, operational, departmental standpoint. Um, so thank you, Mister City Manager.
Okay, so, um, we have consensus with city council, city manager has weighed in, um, Randy's taken copious notes. And are we ready for, or, um, a motion?
So moved.
There's Mike.
Second.
And Zach. All right, we have a motion and a second, and let's have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Protem Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Nagar.
Aye.
Councilmember Ron.
Aye.
And Councilmember Shrink.
Aye.
Excellent, congratulations. Um, first step, first huge step to making, uh, a difference for everyone in the community. Okay, um, we are down to commission reports. And obviously we have any commission reports, so we have public safety tonight.
Hope we have. Madam Mayor Protem, I think we do have some commission reports this evening, so.
Okay.
Didn't wanna, I see, I see, uh, several commissioners on the call here, so. Let you pick who you wanna.
Oh, I see Brad.
Okay. So who we taking first?
Whomever you wish.
Well, I see Brad sitting there, um, and I see Eric.
Those are the two.
That's all I have, okay.
And you have Linay, uh, representing the planning commission.
Okay, she's just not showing. Okay, so, um, Brad, you wanna go first?
I was just gonna say, no report from traffic.
Okay.
Madam Mayor Protem, nice job on the dialogue and, uh, I fully support training new commissioners.
Yeah, thank you. Eric, you're muted, you need to unmute.
Hey, good evening, Madam Mayor Protem.
Protem.
Start this again. Good evening, Madam Mayor Protem Edwards, city council and staff. Uh, just a couple items tonight. Uh, swimming, swimming lessons began July 13th at all three pools. The format this year is family style, which is going extremely well. Uh, this means that our swimmer is in the water with a parent or guardian and the instructor is teaching from the deck. The next session is at the CRC only August 17 through 27. Also, we have released around and about Temecula Park Adventure Series. That dropped on Thursday, July 30th, and the goal here is to encourage and inspire our community to get outside, to re-experience familiar parks and safely discover new ones. The journey began with a bird's eye view of Ronald Reagan Sports Park, which is one of our oldest and largest parks, as you know. It received over, this number is correct, 2,600 views in less than a week. Uh, two final items here. Uh, museum staff is preparing for the upcoming 13th Annual Ralph Love Plane Air Competition, which is scheduled to run September 24th through October 4th. And lastly, our concert series will be continuing featuring Bad Chemistry at Home, Thursday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. This will be via Facebook livestream once again, hosted in the Merc by Timmy D. That concludes my report and I'm available for questions.
Bad Chemistry at Home is a performing group. Yes? Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Linay, I see you now. Go ahead.
Um, I have two meetings to report on. Um, the first one is, um, July 15th. And, uh, we voted on a planning application to combine six individual parcels into a single point eight six acre parcel located on the south side of Fourth Street. And then we also voted on, um, Somers Band. And that's really, if you've been out there to see that, they're really working on that, which is pretty exciting when we haven't seen anything happen there for a lot of years. So, um, we voted on planning ac- application for a private recreation center there consisting of a clubhouse, pool, spa, pickleball courts, bocce ball, root barbecue, yoga lawn and 45 parking spaces. So that's part of their plan. They have three home product reviews that we voted on that are part of the Roy Paul Ranch specific plant. So we've been busy and good to see you all. Good job. Keep Temecula safe and family friendly, please.
Thank you, Linay. So even in COVID, um, you can see our community service department, um, public works and, uh, you know, planning department are still busy. And they have had to change the way that we do business. So people can't come into city hall, they've gotta do their business remotely. And it's obviously working because everyone's busy. The innovative way of, we're doing swimming lessons now is really interesting too. So thank you, everyone, for continuing to, to find new ways to do things that we didn't have to do before. So going on, we have public safety. Hi, John.
Good evening, ma'am, how are you?
Good.
Good. Good evening, uh, Mayor Protem Edwards, uh, council and staff. Temecula Fire Department in July 2020, uh, ran 694 calls in the city. And in the pandemic, uh, 493 of those are, uh, medical in nature. Uh, year to date, we've ran 4,837 calls, which is slightly off from, uh, last year, uh, due to people not being as active, but it is picking up month to month. As far as the, uh, fire prevention side of things, uh, in July for your planned reviews, 374. Construction inspections, 282. Annual inspections, 484. And public inquiries, uh, or counter, uh, at the counter service is 20, uh, with city hall being, uh, closed to the public. Obviously that is down and most of our, uh, inspection or, uh, plan inspections and things of that nature for plan reviews are online. We have added, uh, one feature that is, uh, I think is very important in the City of Temecula. And that is our high resolution thermal imaging cameras. As you can see on the screen, they're small, they fit in the palm of your hand. Uh, they have, uh, infrared technology which allows firefighters to see in the smoke, actually see, uh, what is going on inside of a burning house. Uh, in the wildland setting, um, during fire season, we could use these, uh, to find hotspots. Uh, it was purchased with the AMR fine money, uh, one tick per seat on the engine. So every breathing apparatus on that piece of equipment has a thermal imaging attached to it.
Wow.
Uh, I think life safety here is, is, is key. Uh, that's our job to, uh, to protect the public and, and life is number one. But it also gives us the benefit if a fireman becomes, uh, firefighter becomes disoriented, uh, inside a structure, uh, they could at least see to find their way out. So that enhances the, our safety as well. Uh, on search and rescue, as far as traffic collisions, like I, like you see on the report here, uh, sometimes we have somebody that might be ejected or, um, in a rural area. This gives each firefighter the ability to do a search without relying solely on aircraft, uh, i.e. a helicopter with flare. Uh, we start that search immediately. Also reduces the timeframe to find victims in a fire. We do have larger thermal imaging cameras on the equipment, uh, but there's one. Uh, there's two on our truck company, but what this, uh, pick has done is enable everybody on, uh, the fire ground, a level playing field when it comes to being able to perform their duties, uh, safely and also, uh, give us survivability of, of finding, uh, a victim. And it adds to all emergency operations in the City of Temecula, uh, be it above ground or even underground with some of the rescues that we've had, uh, in the city lately, uh, in our storm chain system. So that is the end of my report and, uh, is there any question?
Um, anybody, any questions? I don't have any, but just thank you for doing such a great job in, uh, you know, under these, uh, challenging times. Anyone? All right, thank you, John. So, city managers report, Aaron.
Uh, Madam Mayor Protem, I, I just wanna commend the members of the city council for, um, you know, the action you took this evening on this initiative. The, the action you took, uh, a month ago. Um, I look around the state and the nation. Things began to quiet down and we got further and further away from, uh, George Floyd's horrendous murder, uh, that was on display for all to see. Um, many communities and leaders have moved on and it's easy thing to do. Uh, this council, uh, did not move on. You adopted a framework. You had meaningful dialogue, both privately, publicly, and you've taken some very, um, bold, courageous and, uh, commendable steps this evening and next month and the month after that, as we continue to work on this together. I couldn't be more proud of the four of you, uh, to work for you. And I know my team is excited to roll up our sleeves and welcome, uh, this new addition and make you proud and, uh, continue to make Temecula a better place than it already was. So I just, I commend you all.
Well, thank you, Aaron, and staff did an amazing job in a very short amount of time, um, to bring this forward. And this is not an easy topic for anyone, but, um, as Mike opened our discussion with, we want to make sure that Temecula is a safe place to have these discussions and that the commission is a safe, um, environment for these discussions. And to the public, um, that may be watching, I would say, um, we can't be all things to all people and a resolution can't be all things to all people either. So join us in that discussion. Uh, once we get started, please come to the meetings and attend, put in an application, uh, to serve on the commission and, um, help us, help us find the answers that we need to find. So, um, Peter, anything, city attorney?
I have nothing for the city attorney's report tonight.
All right. And so that brings us to the adjournment and I will entertain a motion to adjourn to the meeting of August 25th.
And before we do, uh, just a shout out, um, you know, typically when somebody passes away, we, we adjourn in their.
Oh, yes.
But, but let me make it clear, uh, Greg Butler is home and he's just ill. He has not passed away, okay?
No.
Okay.
Well.
But if he's, if he's a knucklehead enough to be watching a city council meeting and he's recovering, okay, then hi Greg and we miss you.
Why would you even bring it up?
Because you know what?
He might be watching.
I like, I like talking about Greg, but why would you even bring up the fact that he is not dead?
Well, because we typically adjourn in the name of somebody who's passed. I don't want any misunderstandings of Greg.
Well, are you suggesting that we adjourn in the name of Greg Butler who is alive as well?
No, no, just hi to Greg before we adjourn.
Yeah, we miss you Greg and we're so glad you're doing all right.
I move we adjourn.
I'll talk to you about this later, Mike. Hey. Consider us adjourned.
Good night, everybody.